Good evening, councillors. Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting. Can I ask that Sally will begin our act of worship, please?
... in the matters. May your Holy Spirit encourage us to work together with joy and enthusiasm. Help us to encourage each other. And with gentleness and respect challenge each other to be the best we can be.
Amen. We art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thank you very much, Sally. Thank you. Would you all please be seated? Thank you. Yes. I'm seeking the council's permission to defer the signing of the minutes of the council meeting held on 13th of November 2023, as they are not contained in the agenda. And I'm asking permission to defer the minutes of that meeting till the next meeting that we meet. Agreed? All right, thank you very much. Are there any apologies?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. We have apologies this evening from councillors Ari Yambath, Alison Austin, Chris Mountain and Leena Zivikian. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any communications, please?
Yes, Mr Mayor, if I could inform council that councillor Helen Staples has agreed to accept the morale.
Councillor Isard has resigned from Cabinet. Subsequently, there has been a reallocation portfolio of holding responsibilities by the leader as follows. The leader's portfolio will now include transport. The deputy leader's portfolio will now include crematoria, cemeteries, allotments, parks and open spaces. Councillor Sarah Sharp's portfolio. Torture will now include leisure. Councillor Emma Presswell's portfolio. Communities now include customs services and...
Thank you very much. Are there any deputitions or petitions?
There are none, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council?
There are three questions, Mr Mayor, that have been received.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the public? Where is the sheet of it? Just there, okay. Okay. Question to councillor Dale Broughton from councillor Stephen Woodlift, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Broughton, people are very unhappy about the current state of Central Park. People want to know when the park will be restored to its former state and when the public will be able to enjoy its facilities. Are you able to give a timetable for its restoration and the cost to the borough council?
Thank you, councillor Woodlift. Councillor Broughton, would you reply, please?
I'd like to thank councillor Woodlift for his question. As you will be aware, Central Park was adversely affected by storm Babette and repairs have continued to be hampered by subsequent storms. Now that we have had drier weather, works have started on the 12th of January to remove the remaining surface water and further works are programmed for later this week, subject to the ground conditions. The costs of the works themselves are being met by the fare operator with support from council officers in getting the works delivered.
Thank you, councillor Broughton. Councillor Woodlift, do you have a supplementary question?
No, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to accept that.
Okay, thank you. I'll roll on to your next question, which is to councillor Andorian.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Andorian, it appears that some councillors are unaware or unsure of the restrictions placed on councillors in regard to the acceptance of gifts and hospitality from well wishes. Do you agree with me that it would be helpful for officers to run a refresher training course for all councillors on the code of conduct for councillors, referencing in particular the risks to elected members' reputations from accepting significant gifts and hospitality?
Thank you, councillor Woodlift. Would you please respond, councillor Andorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And just before I start, council, I would just like to take this moment to wish our mayor a very happy birthday today.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And so...
Six today.
Yeah.
Well, I'm wondering when my bus pass is going to arrive.
So back to the question. I thank councillor Woodlift for notice of his question. Training on the code of conduct for councillors was provided to members following the district council elections in May this year, last year, sorry, as part of the councillor induction programme. I agree with you that refresher training on this topic is important and can confirm that an annual refresher course on the code of conduct is planned for later this year. And I would also like to take the opportunity to remind members that they can contact the monitoring officer or his deputy for advice on any queries they might have relating to the code of conduct. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Councillor Woodlift, do you have a supplementary question?
No, Mr Mayor, that's quite sufficient. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to question three, a question to councillor Andorian from councillor Stephen Woodlift, you again.
Making nuisance of myself, Mr Mayor.
We've got the hat trick.
Referencing the Local Governance Association, the Localism Act gives councils the freedom to be creative and entrepreneurial, acting directly in the interests of their communities and in their own financial interest, by ensuring that decision making will be devolved to the lowest appropriate level, resulting in more locally responsive public services. Do you agree with me that the devolution plans as presented in the agenda item seven to be considered tonight, contrary to the ethos of the Localism Act of 2011?
Thank you again, councillor Woodlift. Would you care to respond, please, councillor Andorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And again, I'd like to thank councillor Woodlift for notice of his question. The issue of devolution cannot be distilled into a short yes or no response, i.e. do I agree with you or not. What I can say is this, that I agree with your belief with regard to decision making being devolved as far as possible to local community leaders, to be done in consultation with their residents, and that when this occurs, what ensures are invariably much better outcomes for local people. The caveat would be those occasions when people grab power or end up with positions of power and use them for petty, personal vendettas. For example, I can think of a local parish council where this is happening as we speak. This evening, we have an agenda item on the overall topic of devolution in Lincolnshire, and I would ask councillor Woodlift for his patience as this unfolds. To ensure that a comprehensive debate takes place, I am willing to support the move to suspend standing orders, which is something that the Conservative group failed to ever do during the last administration. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Councillor Woodlift, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Mr Mayor, it's, I have informed councillor Andorian of what I was going to say, but I'm going to make a slight change because it's not... No. I attended the devolution consultation at the Boston United Football Club's Conference Centre on Thursday, the 11th of January. And during that presentation or consultation, I had a sharp exchange of views with a county councillor. She alleged that Boston Borough Council missed the deadline for the submission of projects to be considered under the first round of the devolution project, and that's why our councillor has no benefits from the initial round of cash provided under deal from her matches government. However, I note at the statement at the foot of page 130 in the agenda pack, which we'll discuss later, that no projects put forward by our council were supported. Perhaps you would like to comment upon the assertion that our council missed the deadline?
Would you care to respond, councillor Andorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I would like to respond, councillor Woodlift. And firstly, I'd like to thank you very much for defending our council in the face of what can only be described as open hostility. I'm incredibly disappointed that yet another councillor who has a seat on both East Lindsay District Council and Lincolnshire County Council and represents their residents as one of our supposed partners, has found it necessary to resort to such underhand and deceitful rhetoric. I can assure you, councillor Woodlift and the rest of council, that we did in fact submit our bid in time. This process was discussed at length by myself and our chief executive. And I have here the very submission that we sent to Debbie Barnes. I've got the email that Rob Barlow sent on my behalf and Debbie's response. Debbie Barnes is the chief exec of Lincolnshire County Council. Rob sent the email on Friday, the 25th of August. And when you receive this copy, I've got one for councillor Woodlift this evening, but I will make it available to all members, you'll see that Debbie Barnes responded to all the chief execs in Lincolnshire the same day, accepting our bid and asking the others to submit their bids by the following Wednesday, the 30th of August. So we were actually five days ahead of some other councils, thereby proving that we were well within the deadline. Given that the elected member you're speaking of, and you've chosen not to name this evening, I'm going to honour that councillor Woodlift. Given that she is a member of councillor Hill's Cabinet, I would suggest that she should be extremely familiar with the Knowland principles of public life. And in my view, her conduct at this event falls far below what is expected of elected members. If I were you, councillor Woodlift, I would give serious consideration to lodging a formal complaint. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Are we now, are we on G? Are there, Mr Chief Executive, are there any questions from members of the public? You're having problems with that, aren't you?
There are none, Mr Mayor.
Right, thank you. Mr Chief Executive, would you like to inquire about decorations?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. May I inquire whether any members wish to declare any interests in respect of any items on tonight's agenda, please?
No, none.
No, not this, no.
Right, okay, well now move on to part two of the agenda. Well, the first being the committee seats review. Can I ask the monitoring officer, John, please to present the item? Get your glass of water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, members. The paper before you sets out that on the 7th of November 2023, the proper officer received notice that councillors Richard and Alison Austin had joined the 2020 Independent Group. Councillors Mr and Mrs Austin had until that point been a group of two, known as the Independent Group.
Can you swap, please, Rhonda? Oh, you've got it now.
I'll try, I'll try one more time. Apologies about that.
I think you're on now.
And in accordance with the Act and regulations, a committee seats review has been undertaken. The report details the requirements of, that we have to go through when undertaking such a review. And 1.5 within the report, there's a table that lists the number of members and the percent... Apologies, I'll repeat that again. Item, paragraph 1.5 of the report sets out the number of members in each of the three political groups and the percentage of seats that they have on the council. On applying the calculations to the totality of the committee...
Where did they get these microphones from? Exchange and Mail, something? Oh, you've got another one coming now. Have another go, John.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Applying the calculations to the totality of the committee seats results in the changes that are listed in section two of the report. And that is that the 2020 Independent Group increases its seats on the overview and scrutiny environment and performance committee by two seats, from two seats to three. The overview and scrutiny corporate and community committee, the 2020 Independent Group increases from one seat to two. On the audit and governance committee, the 2020 Independent Group increases from two seats to three seats. On the licensing regulator and appeals committee, the 2020 Independent Group increases from two seats to three. And on the planning committee, the 2020 Independent Group increases from two seats to three seats. And an up-to-date list of committee membership reflecting those changes is attached to appendix A. So turning to the recommendations of the report, members are, the recommendations are that the committees and panels to which the political proportionality rules are applied continue as at present, as detailed in appendix A to the report, that the revised allocation of seats to political groups be approved as detailed in section 2.1 of the report and appendix A, and that group leaders advise of any changes to the current appointments to committees and panels as set out in appendix A, and that the council approves any such changes in accordance with its duty to give effect to the wishes of the political group. And in respect of that third recommendation, I've been advised of the following changes by the group leaders. So the group leader of the 2020 Independent Group has advised that councillor Alison Austin will take the substitute place on the South East Lincolnshire Joint Strategic Planning Committee. And that the group leader of the Boston Independent Group has advised that councillor Isard will take the place of councillor Middleton on the overview and scrutiny environment and performance committee. That councillor Isard will take the place of councillor Pierpoint on the overview and scrutiny committee corporate and community. That on the chief officer employment panel, councillor Sharp will take the place of councillor Isard as a named substitute. And that on the chief officer employment appeals panel, councillor Pierpoint will take the place of councillor Sharp on that panel. So if I could ask through you, Mayor, for someone to make the, make, propose those recommendations, including those changes to membership which I've just outlined.
Yes, indeed. Thank you, John. Do I have a proposer, please? Councillor Andorian, do you have a seconder? Councillor Broughton, thank you very much. Do you wish to speak now, councillor Broughton, or speak at the end? You don't wish to reserve your right to speak? Okay. Right, we've had a proposer and a seconded. Are there any speakers on this item, please? Does anybody wish to speak? No, I can see no, no request to speak. So thank you. We'll now move to the vote. Those in favour, against or abstain, please. Those in favour? One night, I'll vote, I'm, not this one. So that's pretty much carried, isn't it, Rhonda? Do you agree? Okay, that's carried. Second item on tonight's agenda, this is a review of polling districts and polling places 2023. Can I ask the monitoring officer to present this one? So you're on again, please, John.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Under section 17 of the Electoral Registration Administration Act 2013, there is a requirement for local authorities to undertake a review of their parliamentary polling districts and polling places every five years. The last review for this council was completed in December 2019, and it was considered timely to complete a further review in advance of the scheduled police and crime commissioner elections in May 2024. The council must designate a polling place for every polling district, and in determining where those places should be located, the council must seek to ensure that all electors have reasonable facilities for voting that are practical and accessible to all electors. The review was subject to a public consultation, and further details of that are contained within the report. And there were submissions, and again, details of those submissions and responses to those submissions are contained within the report. Chairman, the recommendations are that the council adopts the polling districts and polling places as listed in appendix A to the report, which include the following changes: to split the current polling district HC in the Witherne Ward to create a new polling district; b, as a result of the creation of a new polling district in the Witherne Ward, that the Boston Town Football Club area be used as a polling place for the newly created polling district; c, to relocate the polling place for polling district IC in the Coastal Ward from Freestown Parish Hall to the Danny Flair Community Centre. The second recommendation is to amend the polling district reference codes as listed in appendix A, which is more of an administrative task. And the third recommendation is that the acting returning officer, which is Mr Leach, be granted delegated authority for keeping the polling districts and polling places under review and amending any such arrangements, following consultation with local ward members where there is an operational need prior to the next compulsory borough-wide review. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, John. Can I have a proposer, please? Councillor Andorian, thank you. Councillor Isard as seconder. So do we have any speakers on this item, please? Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Andorian.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll be very brief. I just want to say thank you very much to the acting returning officer for being so adept at responding to the needs of our councillors and local residents. I think it's a great piece of work that councillor Isard did in flagging this up, and it just shows the democracy in action here, Mr Mayor, that the monitoring, the acting returning officer took his comments on board and has created a whole new polling division. I think that's a good outcome for the residents of councillor Isard and councillor Goshe's Ward. So yes, I'm very happy with this report, and I'll, as I said, keep my comments very brief.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? No, right, we'll go to the vote. Can we have a vote in favour? Please? I think that's clearly carried, Rhonda. Yes, that's clearly carried. So we'll now move on to item number three. Risk management framework. Councillor Andorian, would you like to present this item and move the recommendations, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So a revised risk management framework has been drafted for the partnership, that's all three councils, and this provides alignment and consistency and includes best practice and feedback from internal audit. This has been presented at Audit and Governance on the 20th of November 23. There are no specific changes to the framework, Mr Mayor, from that meeting, but there will be improvements to the quarterly reporting to reflect suggestions made by Jo Brigham. Jo's our new independent person on the Audit and Governance panel, and she met with myself and Suzanne Rolfe after that Audit and Governance meeting and gave us a very good insight and steer into how we could improve our reporting to council. So I'm delighted with her contribution, Mr Mayor. This report was also presented to Cabinet on the 13th of December, who recommended this for adoption. So I ask council to adopt the framework with discretion to the Assistant Director for Governance to make any small changes to the framework thereafter, to avoid any unnecessary, excuse me, unnecessary delays unless changes are substantive, in which case it will come back to council. So I would like to move the recommendations on page 43, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Andorian. Do you have a seconder? Councillor Broughton, thank you. Do you wish to reserve your right to speak, or do you want to speak now? Okay. All right, okay. So are there any speakers on this item? Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Cantwell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to say that members will note on the abstract on page 49 that it states the principles that will be followed for implementing effective risk management. And I for one would just like to welcome that commitment to effective risk management, and I look forward to seeing that demonstrated over the next lifecycle of this framework.
Right, thank you, councillor Cantwell. Anybody else? Does anybody else wish to speak? No? Okay, we'll take a vote on this. Those in favour? Clearly carried, Rhonda? Okay, that's carried forward, and we'll move on now to item four. The next on tonight's agenda is the midterm treasury management update. Councillor Goshe, would you like to present this item and move the recommendations, please? Thank you. Is your microphone on?
Yeah. Is it working? The report on page 67 and appendix on page 73 refers to the midterm treasury report and shows the treasury position of the council as of 30th of September 23. The report has previously been to Audit and Governance Committee for review and scrutiny on 20th of November 23, prior to its submission to council today. The treasury management strategy statements for 2024 was approved by council on 6th March 23, and there are no policy changes being proposed. The economic and interest rate forecast, section three on page 75, provides an economic update and interest rate update, and has been provided by Link Group, who are external treasury advisers to the council. Current market views are that interest rates have now been peaked. Capital expenditure, the table at the top of page 80 shows that the latest approved budget for capital expenditure was nearly 36 million, actual expenditure on 30th September of 1.588 million, and an estimated outturn of 12.2... requirement of 959,000 to be financed from internal borrowing rather than taking an external debt. The council's capital financial requirement, it's on page 81. This is the measure of the council's underlying need to borrow for capital purposes. This was 17.2 million as of 30th of September 23, with actual external borrowing of 16.449 million. The council was therefore 798,000 internally borrowed. The borrowing rates, the chart on page 84 shows PWLB borrowing rates during the first six months of the financial year. This shows the continuation in the rise in rates since the start of the financial year. On 9th of October, the 15.449 million of PWLB borrowing was prematurely repaid. By repaying this borrowing, the council received a discount of 6.417 million. As this was after the 30th of September, the financial implications of this decision will be reflected in the Treasury annual report submitted to council after the end of financial year. The annual investment strategy, page 85, the council's investment priorities are security of capital, followed by liquidity and finally yield in that order. The Bank of England base rate at the start of the financial year was 4.25%, and this had increased to 5.25% by the end of September 30. Investment portfolio and performance, the tables on page 87 to page 90 provide information relating to the council's 40.09 million treasury investments and 17.7 million property fund investments. The table on page 91 shows that the annual budget for interest received on treasury investment is 818,000... thousand, and the projected outturn is one point six six eight million, giving a budget surplus of eight hundred and fifty thousand pounds. The annual budget for net revenue distributions received on property fund investment is six hundred and forty-four thousand, and the projected outturn is six hundred and sixty-two thousand, giving a budget surplus of eighteen thousand pounds. This gives a combined annual projected budget surplus of eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand on thirtieth of September. The recommendation is that council receives and reviews the contents of the report at Appendix A. That concludes my overview of the report. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. councillor Goshe, do you have a seconda? councillor Pierpoint, thank you very much. Do you wish to reserve your right to speak, or? No? Okay, all right, we'll move on then to... Well, basically, councillor Goshe, would you like to sum up? I've missed something out, haven't I? What? Yes, does anybody else wish to speak? Fopa. Whose hand went up first? That's not working either.
Not working? Okay.
You've got three on now.
Take three. I would like to thank the officers and councillor Goshe for this report. It's very clear and very readable, which, for an audit-y sort of document, is quite good going, because they do sometimes tend to be a bit dry. And I do like the way that we are, as a council, or the administrative group, looking after our budget. We see so many councils failing around the country, and reading this, we do seem to be, you know, relatively good play, considering how we are treated by government. But one thing within the report actually gave me a slight chuckle, and I would like to refer members to page eighty-five. Creditworthiness. Following the government's fiscal event on the twenty-second of September twenty-twenty-two, which is a rather interesting use of words for Liz Truss's reckless Tory government tanking our economy. So I congratulate the officers on dealing with that without causing offence. Thank you.
Hmm. councillor Goshe, do you wish to make any comments? I've got another question. I beg your pardon, but I want to give councillor Goshe the opportunity to reply to that.
Thank you, councillor Gleeson. Yes, we are trying to, you know, keep a track of our investment continuously and taking a decision on correct time. Like, we paid back the PWLB loan, and we save quite a bit of money there. So yeah, thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, councillor Goshe. Who we got next? Do you want to go next? All right then. councillor Woodliffe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I would echo most of what my colleague councillor Gleeson said. I'm particularly pleased to see that the Public Works Loan Board loan has been disposed of. That fifteen million pounds is always a worry to me, and we've managed to chuck it back at government at a discount. I think it's about five million pounds discount, something along those lines, you know.
Six and a half.
Sorry, six million.
Six and a half, yeah.
Yep. That's a very, very good deal, isn't it? It's a very, very good deal. I think we owe a great debt to our officers, you know, in this, who have managed these matters so carefully. You know, we're only humble politicians and such, and we're bound to make errors, but our officers are very, very good in this regard. They've looked after and cared for the finances extremely well, and we're in a very strong position, therefore, as compared with so many other councils around the country, which are struggling to find a pound down the settee or something of that nature.
Yes.
Or to balance their books. So I think, therefore, we owe a great debt to our officers, to Sean Howson, who's the interim Treasury Manager, and to Christine Marshall, our side here, Deputy Chief Executive for Corporate and Development, and Section one five one officer. We owe a great debt to them. Your six million pounds is a fair bit of cash, isn't it? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Woodliffe. Are there any other speakers? Does anybody else wish to speak? councillor Priek.
You want this one?
Just that one. There you go, yes.
Sixth time lucky. Again, I'd like to thank councillor Goshe and the officers for this very comprehensive report, which is one of the better ones I've seen in local government in my time across a number of councils. I would like to ask him what advice the council takes on its investments, in particular on ethical investments. Because when I noticed our investments, which may have ended in HSBC and Goldman Sachs and Lloyds, I immediately thought of the ethical issues that those...
We can't hear you, I'm afraid. The mic's gone off. Need a red ring around the end of it.
Thank you. Goldman Sachs were heavily criticised last year for their investment in companies in the West Bank of Palestine on land stolen from Palestinians. And for Goldman Sachs's credit, they divested in August last year. We finished with them in October, which is great. However, Goldman Sachs are still very heavily invested, still in fossil fuel exploration and extraction, also tobacco production, also junk food companies putting lots of sugar, salt, trans fats and saturated fats in packaged foods. Also, they are heavily invested in palm oil technology. That's the destruction of forests to create fats which we probably don't need. HSBC are also involved in the deforestation for palm oil. They were the worst bank in Britain for mis-selling of financial products, and they've been implicated in human rights abuses in Hong Kong for conspiracy to abuse locals there. HSBC also invests in companies using Uyghur slave labour in Xinjiang still. They also invest in companies producing cluster bombs and depleted uranium weapons. Lloyds Bank go a little bit further in giving loans to companies selling weapons to Israel, Saudi Arabia, and Yemen. And the weapons they sell to Israel are being used in Gaza as we speak. It would be helpful if this council took ethical advice on its investments, and I hope that we could get reports, we, members of the council, could get reports on this every year, maybe as part of this report, maybe separately, maybe we can raise it at audit or elsewhere. But I would welcome more information on how ethical our investments are, because I think the people of the borough would quite like to know whether their money is being used to kill Palestinians, for example.
Have you finished?
I have, thank you.
Okay. councillor Goshe, do you wish to... Where?
Thank you, councillor, for your point. Actually, we are utilizing a third-party company named Link Group and taking their expertise in this matter. We can obviously go into detail, but it's a difficult task, I think, to get into detail and how they are investing and really finding out in detail. But yeah, I'll try to find it out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Goshe. Are there any other speakers on this matter? Do you wish to speak, councillor Dorian?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a couple of points. I think councillor Priek raises some valid issues in his monologue. I think you would be better served, councillor Priek, bringing those issues before Audit and Governance, and perhaps speaking with councillor Goshe to gain his support. This isn't a question-and-answer session, and you would be far better influencing our investment strategy by doing it through the proper channels. Because what you say has merit, and it's going, I don't want to get lost in the mechanisms of what full council is. And I wanted to support what councillor Woodliffe said about the redeeming of loans this year, which saved us six and a half million pounds. You're right to credit Sean Howson, our Treasury Manager, and you're right to credit Christine Marshall, our Section one five one officer, because it's to their credit, to their swift action and quick thinking that they brought that decision before Cabinet. We met at an emergency kind of situation, and were able to pursue that route, which saved this council six and a half million pounds. So thank you for acknowledging that, councillor Woodliffe, and supporting our decision. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. Does anybody else wish to speak? No, I think that's a wrap. Okay, we'll go to the vote. So we'll go to the vote. Those in favour? Cleared, Rhonda? Yeah, I think so. Yes, okay, right, that's another one done. Next item on tonight's agenda is the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Quarter Two Finance Update. councillor Goshe, would you like to present the item and move the recommendation, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This report is for council to accept the recommendations from Cabinet to amend the capital programme as reported at quarter two. During the Boston Town Deal Meeting held on fifth of July twenty-three, the board supported the reallocation of project funding from Town Fund, Healing the High Street, short fries to Town Fund Leisure Plaza of five hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred and sixty-six. The reallocation was supported due to an underspend on the Healing the High Street project, and following the recently issued guidance from the Deluc around changes to town deal projects to allow greater flexibility. Mayor Sarr therefore proposed that council approve the recommendation as set out in the report. The recommendation is that council amend that capital programme to take into account the changes set out in this report at Appendix A, Table five. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goshe. Do you have a seconda? councillor Creswell. I think you and Patsy mixed up, actually. councillor Creswell, thank you. Okay, are there any speakers on this subject, please? Anybody wish to speak? councillor Woodliffe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Well, I'm not a finance expert, so I really can't make a comment, but I am concerned, as I'm sure that others may well be, about the comment on page ninety-nine. At the top, it says the quarter two, the revenue outturn forecast a deficit position of five hundred eleven thousand pounds at the end of the year. Now, we're not at the end of the year yet. I hope that the administration will be able to eliminate that in some manner, because it's pointed out at various places in the report, total efficiencies to be found to balance the year and based upon the quarter two forecast. Now, it is only quarter two forecast, and we've got somewhere to go on that, but it is important that we balance our books. So I assume, I'm going to assume that there are plans in hand to be able to deal with this. But obviously, there's not a place for questions and answers. I'm going to ask, I'm going to suggest that I am going to assume that our administration has total efficiencies in mind to be able to deal with this, and we don't end the year with a deficit. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank councillor Woodliffe. Are there any other questions? Anybody else have a question? councillor Cantwell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like the Cabinet member to assure my residents that there will be no cuts to frontline services while he is looking for his efficiencies. And I would also like him to clarify whether he is concerned at the predicted rate that the Boston Independent Party are using this council's reserves.
Any other questions? councillor Goshe, would you like to respond or sum up?
Christine, you want to come in? Thanks.
What? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Christine, you want to come in, please? Yeah, okay. So probably I can get back to you with the questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do you wish to speak again? All right, okay. All right, we'll move to the vote if there's nobody else to speak to us. Are those in favour, please? Raise your hand. Cleared, Rhonda? Seems so. Okay, right. Now we're on to... Ah, this is item number seven. Six. Sorry, but I appreciate you. I'm bunged up with cold. The next item on the agenda is the Audit and Governance Committee Annual Report. councillor Pierpoint, would you like to present the item and move the recommendation, please?
I hope you can hear me all right, can you?
Yes.
Good, okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Happy New Year to you all. As the twenty-two, twenty-three chairman and vice-chairman and longer elected members of this authority, it gives me a great pleasure and falls to me as the new chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee to present the committee's annual report for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, which is attached to Appendix A to this report. I'd like to start by thanking the previous committee members for all their hard work on behalf of the council. And as members will note, the work of the committee is a key component in Boston's corporate governance framework. It provides an independent and high-level focus on the audit, assurance, and reporting arrangements to underpin good governance and financial standards within the authority. Our work is one of the oversight, monitoring, seeking assurance from management and independent auditors on the effectiveness of the governance framework, including applying appropriate scrutiny regarding the completion of all recommendations. Given the important role the committee has within the authority, the committee felt that it was important to present the annual report to all council members to raise the awareness of its work. It also accords with recognised best practice. The annual report provides a summary of the activities undertaken by the committee, which included work in the following areas: internal audit, external audit, treasury accounts. This included review and approval of the council's financial statement for twenty-one, twenty-two, and regular reviews of the council's treasury management arrangements. Governance reports, the committee approved the annual governance statement in twenty-two, twenty-three, and reviewed proposed changes to align the council's contract procedure rules across the South East Lincolnshire Council partnerships. The changes were subsequently adopted by all three councils. Risk management. The committee reviewed the strategic risk register on a quarterly basis. Full details of all reports of the work undertaken by the committee are available on the council's website. In addition to the above areas of work undertaken in twenty-two, twenty-three, the new committee has since May supported the development of a revised local code of corporate governance and risk management framework for the council, recruited a new co-opted independent member who brings a vast amount of expertise and experience working at board level and finance from an outsider's view onto this committee. Going forward, I'd like to, the Audit and Governance Committee to continue to strive for excellence while witnessing their growth and experience, bringing a balanced, independent, objective approach to the business of the committee, and challenging all areas of financial management where necessary in the council. With ongoing training for the committee members in all areas of their remit, I'm very confident this will be achieved. Finally, I'd like to thank all the committee members, officers, pastor and president for their time, work, and input to the work of committees. Mr Mayor, I'm happy to take any comments or questions the members may have on this report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pierpoint. Do you have a seconda? Oh, thank you. I was holding that in for us as long as I could. Thank you, councillor Danny. Does anybody wish to speak? councillor Cantwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very quickly, I'd just like to echo that this does show best practice, and I'd like to compliment the hard work of the chairman of the Audit and Governance Committee. He has certainly shown his expertise and strong leadership of this committee since taking charge in May. And I would also like to welcome and compliment our new... And I would also like to welcome and compliment our new independent member, who I think will be a beacon of knowledge for this committee going forward. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cantwell. Does anybody else wish to speak? No, I don't think so. Right, we'll go to the vote. Please, those in favour? Carry it, yes, okay. And right now we're on to number seven, which is the devolution deal. And the final item on tonight's agenda is the devolution deal for Greater Lincolnshire. Councillor Dorian, would you please like to present the items and move the recommendations? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So item number seven is about devolution and the recommendations start on page one, two, nine. And you have recommendations one, two on your paper and then on your table, there are three more. Or it's, there's three within one. And I'll just read those out, Mr Mayor. The additional ones are that the council resolves that the council is disappointed that the governance arrangements do not allow for each of the seven district councils to have a seat on the mayoral combined county authority. That this council is concerned that the funding arrangements are not linked to any inflationary increases. Therefore, we question what the value of twenty four million pounds per annum will be in the year twenty fifty four. And that given the content of the entire proposal and deal, the council cannot support it in its current form. And in addition to that, Mr Mayor, I'm going to propose that we suspend council procedure rule seventeen point five, which is in effect suspending standing orders which will allow members to speak more than once. But you can speak for five minutes. And I would urge all members, Mr Mayor, to speak on this item simply because it's one of the most important issues that we will vote on as an elected member body. The impact of it is huge. So I'd just like to take members back to the last four years when I was in opposition and, and share with you that there was never any talk of devolution. And I'm looking to councillor Woodliffe to reinforce that, that we had no briefing on devolution, we had no information on devolution from the administration at that time. Yet it was one of the first and most important issues that I had to deal with after the election. And the process had already gone some way down the tracks, Mr Mayor. And there were already parameters set out, and even then I couldn't agree to them. As I got engaged with the process and with councillor Martin Hill or the leader of Lincolnshire County Council and the other district leaders, we were told that we had to act with complete confidentiality at all times. So I was very limited in what I could share with the rest of this body. However, as soon as I was able to, I arranged a briefing for all members to meet Debbie Barnes, chief exec of Lincolnshire County Council, and Lee Sirdifield, the project officer who was taking forward all the admin work and the negotiations with government. And thank you to those of you who attended because we really did have a good discussion and debate. Now, two things strike me about the devolution proposal, Mr Mayor, and the two issues that concern me more are around the governance and around the funding. Initially, after the election, when I came on board and started this dialogue, there were two seats available for district councils, two for seven district councils. And that was just untenable. For me, right from the get go, I wanted a seat at the table. If I was going to represent Boston residents, we needed a seat at the table. We couldn't do it from a back room. We couldn't do it if they were talking in Lincoln and I was stuck in Boston. So for me, that was a line in the sand. I needed to be able to represent the people who elected us. Sometime after the May election, as negotiations continued, we were then told that the offer was increased to four seats at the table. Four seats still for seven district councils. And I still found that untenable. Martin Hill was desperate for our approval. He needed the majority of local councils to come on board in order to satiate government's request. And eventually the crunch day came. And myself voted against, the independent leader of South Cay voted against, and the Lib Dem leader of West Lindsay voted against. The three conservative leaders, all good men, reputable men, honest men, in my view, felt that they could support the deal, Mr Mayor, and they voted for, four seats at the table for seven districts. And so the kingmaker, if you like, or the queenmaker became Lincoln City Council when they voted to support the deal. So councillor Hill had his majority and took that forward to government. Let me tell you why I think governance is so important, apart from being able to represent the people who elected you. And it could be any of you who was going to represent us. Is, we'll talk about the population figures. Now, you know, this is called a level three deal. It gives us a mayor. It's the upper tier authorities who have negotiated with government. So that's the county council, North Lincolnshire Council and North East Lincolnshire Council. North Links and North East Links are unitary authorities. And I, I wouldn't mind if you just wrote these numbers down because it helps clarify and crystallise what's going on here. North Lincolnshire's population at the twenty twenty one census was a hundred and sixty nine thousand seven hundred. Okay, hundred and sixty nine thousand seven hundred. North East Lincolnshire's population at the twenty one census is a hundred and fifty six thousand nine hundred. A hundred and fifty six, nine hundred. So in total, the two northern unitaries have a population of three hundred and twenty six thousand six hundred people. Then if you look at Lincolnshire County Council, the whole of our county population is seven hundred and sixty eight thousand three hundred and sixty four in the same census. So we've got more than double the number of residents as the two constituent authorities in the north. Yet they've got two thirds of the seats on the mayoral combined county authority. Now, I don't know what you guys think, but that's not fair to me. And they're the ones that have the votes, the constituent authorities, North East Links, North Links and Links County Council. They're the ones that have the vote, Mr Mayor, not the four districts out of seven who have a seat at the table. So that's not fair. And anything that's not fair is not right. And when you work with teenagers, as long as I've worked with teenagers, they'll tell you if it's not fair, it's not right. Now, with regard to the funding, well, what can I say? Anyone who lives in Boston, who has a finger on the pulse, knows that local people think that all their council tax gets spent anywhere except here. Well, now we've proved the right. Because when councillor Hill came a calling to talk about devolution, I challenged him on that figure. I told him, you know that local Boston people think all their council taxes spent in Lincoln and elsewhere. He said, oh, no, that's not true. I can prove it, he said. I said, go on then, prove it. So eventually he sent me the figures and you will see those figures, some of them, on page one hundred and thirty one. Section one point one zero speaks for itself. It tells you there, colleagues, that the average spend per district council is sixty five million pounds. Between twenty seventeen and twenty two, the average spend was sixty five million pounds per local authority. But the average spend in Boston, Mr Mayor, was twenty three point seven million. That's the lowest in the whole of Lincolnshire. It is outrageous. Amazingly, five point two percent of the overall total. That's what we got. Five point two percent. And what I'd like to know is why our Lincolnshire County Council representatives have allowed that to happen. Boy, have they got some explaining to do. Then to make matters worse, Mr Mayor, Lincolnshire County Council, as a kind of sweetener, if you like, I think you might call it, got twenty million pounds of funding to be shared out amongst all the districts. And we referred to it earlier when councillor Woodliffe asked me the question he did, and I asked him to indulge me and bear with me. But we got nothing. We got nothing. And now the rumor mill started, and you know what they say, a lie can get halfway around the world before the truth is put its shoes on. Well, the truth is, we did bid for that funding and we got nothing. Once again, the Lincolnshire County Council representatives not only allowed it to happen, Mr Mayor, they voted for it. They voted for Boston to get nothing. And I think that is outrageous. So I think it's high time those councillors who represent Boston were called to a scrutiny. I will provide the scrutiny chairs with all the information I have. But I really do think that in addition to what's going on here, Mr Mayor, that the scrutiny chair should get this by the scruff of the neck and get these Lincolnshire representatives in and demand answers of them. So I'm going to finish here for now, Mr Mayor. But I strongly recommend that council votes for these proposals tonight, which in effect is saying, no, the deal's not good enough and this council doesn't support it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Dorian. That's a very descriptive speech. Yes. Yes. I now seek for a vote. On recommendations, we need council's consent. Can I ask for a show of hands in support, please? I haven't really said that too well, am I?
Thank you. I think it was proposed that we, sorry.
Carry on, John.
If I could be of assistance. I think there was a proposal to suspend the council's procedural seventeen point five, which would allow members to speak more than once in the debates. It's been proposed. It needs seconded and then a vote on, on that to allow that to happen.
So who's proposing, who's seconding? You're proposing, you're seconding. Sorry, I've missed you out, councillor Pierpoint. Okay, let's go, let's go for the vote on that, please. Rhonda? Is that carried? Who carried to me? Yes, okay, right, that's carried. So suspension will now vote on the Yes, we do need a seconder for councillor Dorian's proposal. Yes. We already did that. Anyway, it's councillor Broughton. Recommendation to reserve you. You reserve your right to speak. Yes. So are there any? Yes, are there any speakers on this, please? Does anybody wish to speak? Councillor Woodliffe, you? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Well, councillor, I think I saw councillor Gleeson's hand up. Yes. All right, you go, you go first, councillor Gilbert. No, here we go again.
Yeah, I support the administration's proposal and don't support the proposal for a devolved mayoral county combined authority. And there are a number of reasons why I don't support it. Firstly, I reject entirely. This proposal enhances our clearly faltering and increasingly absurd idea that it is an extension of democracy. Democracy in this country is in retreat because power is becoming self-serving and remote to the lives of ordinary voters. Top-down power being passed off as democracy is a contradiction in terms. The proposal for a combined mayoral authority fails the test of democratic accountability and that the constituent or mandated power is concentrated into the hands of seven people. And they will all represent the declining industrial north of Lincolnshire. Lincolnshire is an asymmetrical county. It has an industrial north and it has a rural south. Therefore, the concept, the context of coherence, which is referred to in the government's report, is absent. The process for getting a grace and favour non constituent member's seat on the combined authority is not yet decided. And indeed, the representation from the south will be partial and not total. It's simply a shift of power away from local communities and their representatives, people like us here in this chamber. In addition, the party-based political system, which encourages hostility and is corrosive and nationally denies the opportunity for proper scrutiny of Westminster and the proper governance of our country, will within our existing attack and defend political system, result in this proposal just becoming another arena for the futility of party politics to be played out. This combined authority will ensure achieve nothing, but will become the government's, or more accurately, the civil services get out of jail free card, allowing them to avoid their responsibility for regional failure. Just as with the police and crime commissioners, the weakness in policing, we are told, is down to the public electing the wrong commissioner. But we can vote for the right one next time. But we all know that that never happens. And so it will be with this elected mayor. However, from the government's point of view, they will have only a few people to bribe or bully when a programme of implementing, for example, lower mission zones, becomes the Westminster civil services' latest obsession. The public are then forced to suck it up. And then once it is implemented, all they can do is punish the mayor the next time there's an election by electing somebody else. It's a safety precaution for government rather than democracy. The second objection I have is that we aren't really just creating another, we are just really creating another tier of local government, operating between top-tier authorities and Westminster, which in reality is limited in scope to transport and adult education. With the aspiration to use these and house building as a means of generating economic growth, as they call it, levelling up. It will simply become another bureaucracy, complete with its own on costs, budgets and expenses, staffed by well-renumerated senior officers and only in theory under the control of a shifting array of party politicians. The economic or levelling up aspirations seem to relate primarily, primarily to house building and inflating house price values. And in my opinion, will result in the combined authority getting wrapped up in disputes with local communities and lower tier authorities, some of which won't even be, won't even be non constituent members of the kind combined authority itself. In addition to star up costs for the new authority, it is claimed that we will receive a twenty four million pound a year sweetener paid over thirty years. Twenty four million pounds a year paid over thirty years. But the minister for local communities is, according to the report, minded to scrap the Lincolnshire Enterprise partnership, which in twenty twenty had a twenty million pound budget. I'm not convinced that twenty four million is in real terms what we will actually get. Finally, having waded through the Harvard Business School-like motivational, motivational and aspirational wording of the report, with all its positive and uplifting language, we arrive at the commitments underpinning the deal on page one eight eight and one eight nine in our agenda. This suggests that there remain a lot of details to be worked out. Details that will inexorably affect the final funding structure and constitution of the devolved authority. We're being asked to sign up to a contract, the terms of which haven't been fully worked out, posted or agreed. We need greater democracy and accountability at local level if we are to tap into the talents of ordinary people and transform our borough county and country. This proposal gives us neither more democracy nor proper accountability. And I find it hard to imagine how anyone thinks it actually does.
Thank you, councillor Gilbert. Did councillor Bedford have his hand up? Do you wish to speak? And then councillor Gleeson and then councillor Staples. I've missed you out, I know.
Firstly, can I congratulate our leader for pushing this paper? Because if ever there is a document that is full of ifs, buts and maybes, there is nothing in here that is going to produce anything, well, certainly for Boston. But mainly for the whole of Lincolnshire, you've only got to read through it. And if you read through the document, it talks about water management. Part of it talks about coastal defences. Well, if you take coastal defences budget that the EAP at the moment through DAPR and so on and so that's about twenty odd million here on its own, just to pump sand back on the beach again to defend it. And that, that is the idea of it. So. So to do that is, I agree with what they do, but not the fact that the government are going to handle it all. Because that's what it boils down to at the end of the day, or it does in my mind. The LEP figure that councillor Gilbert's talked about, again. LEP have done a great deal of work for Lincolnshire and the businesses of Lincolnshire. But if their £20 million funding has now got to come out of the county council, we're now in a minus situation. As far as the seats on the scrutiny panels are concerned, let's face it, City of Lincoln will get one. The other two would be Conservatives. No ifs, or buts about that. The independent ones, South Caers and West Lindsay, because it's liberal, run now. You wouldn't get a seat at the table. As far as I'm concerned, and I went to the Boston United One and spoke to one of the county officers, that really didn't understand the process of this and what it really means. He knew his little tiny bit, no doubt about that. But he really, when I asked him about coastal defence money and the fact they talk about fresh water and so on, what are they going to do with that? You know, the new lagoon there at Threckingham? That's already in the pipeline. No ifs, no buts. So again, it's in here as a wish, if you like. And then, of course, we come to the third issue of the mayor. I'm nothing against having a mayor, an elected mayor, if it brings in money. But it's going to cost you, it's going to cost me. Because it's a precept, it's another precept. So not only the police, not only the county council, the borough council and the parish councils. And that precept figure to set up a mayoral office is also in it, which is hidden in there a little bit, got to a point of deputy mayor. Again, that's not up on the front bit, but he has got to do. It's in the statute. So at the end of the day, I hate to think what that precept would be per property. And looking at the council tax collection records earlier on tonight, we've got a problem of getting council tax and that in now. If you get that on the top of it, it's going to be absolutely ridiculous. My only point on your additions would be the fact that county council should come in front of a scrutiny committee. Now, we've actually got some papers next on Debbie Barnes' case. She came last time. Again, it was, oh, we're going to do this and we may do that. We've now got paperwork with figures on that you can question. You couldn't before. So with that, I will close, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, councillor Bedford. Councillor Gleeson, do you want to go next? And I acknowledge that councillor Woodlift is after you, followed by councillor Staples.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Again, like my colleagues here, I congratulate the leader on the way she has handled this matter. This is a serious threat to the future of our county. The idea of devolving power from civil servants in Westminster to local communities, it's fair, there's nothing wrong with that concept. But what we're doing is they're taking a system that's designed for urban areas, heavy populated areas, areas where there's a level of cohesion, where a mayor can affect change that assists the whole area. Lincolnshire, with the two unitaries added, is a large area. The power will be in the north. The unitaries will have two-thirds of the serious votes on the committees. And I won't blame them for using it in their area, because I would do the same if I could. So we have a system that is never going to help Boston, or in truth, the south of the county. The leader of the council also obtained this evidence that shows or confirms belief that Boston is constantly being underfunded by the county. These figures show from 2017. I imagine if we were to try and get more figures, we would find it was going back a very long way. I must admit, it's worse than I thought it was. I always took a little bit, a pinch of salt with some of the statements of people, you know, of how badly we're treated. But now the evidence is here. On that, as Chair of Corporate Community, I will happily add this to my work programme. And I'm happy to work with the other scrutiny committee if they want to as well. We do need to call both our county council and the county before us and find out what is happening. Because this is serious underfunding. This isn't just, you know, we're getting a little bit less. We are getting a quarter on occasion. So we really do need to look at this. And brings me to a slight aside, but I will raise it as I've raised before. Every year for the past nearly 12 years, we have taken half a million pounds from the pockets of the poorest families in Boston by reducing the amount of council tax support we give. And every year, we give that half a million pounds to the county. I know they're different issues, but when you see how badly we are being treated by them, I really do think we need to protect our local population, our local people who are suffering under the severe austerity that we have had. So we need to look at that as well. But I will support the resolutions. And I do think we need to pursue this vigorously. And we need to make sure the people of Boston are fully aware. It might be some of our county councillors have lost interest in Boston. We haven't. And, you know, we must now join and stand up and fight to make sure we get our fair share and that we are protected if this goes ahead. You know, there's an old phrase, I seem to remember, something like beware of Tories bearing gifts? Or was that Trojans? You know, this is moving the risk to us or to the new authority. There's no new, real money here. They pretend we're getting this as new money. It isn't new money. This is money that would have been spent. And it most likely may be not as much money as could have been spent. And as the leader said, and it's not going to be raised by inflation. So what they're doing, they're putting the risk onto us, as they have done with lots of their other policies. They move the risk out from them, put on us so that the new mayoral authority can take the blame rather than government. We need to resist this at every level. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Gleeson. Thank you very much. Councillor Woodlift, please.
Just now. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said. Councillor Gleeson, councillor Gilbert and councillor Bedford, they speak for me. And I think they'll probably speak for everybody here. I picked out, when the leader was picking out 110, I think it was on page 131, I read the last line, it says it works out at £334.86 per Boston resident. The average for Lincolnshire districts is £583.70 per resident. We are being short-changed, you know. We do get a bad deal here. We had a bad deal here for a long, long time. I do agree with councillor Gleeson when he says the risk is being moved down to us from government and we're being asked to pay for it. You know, if it says on page, if I can find it. Yes, page 157, sections 75 and 76. The elected mayor will have the power to issue a precept on local council tax bills to help pay for the mayor's work. Yeah? And then the next one, it says the elected mayor will have the power to introduce a supplement on business rates for expenditure on a project or projects that will promote economic developments in the area, subject to a ballot of effective businesses. I mean, this is just tax on tax, isn't it? And we are taxed enough and really, as it is. But this is a tax on a tax on the poorest area in Lincolnshire. I've picked off, I've read this document over and over again. Gave me a headache last night, gave me a headache today. And I'm not the only one, I'm sure. I agree with the idea that we should have it all scrutinised, yes. And I will support the motion that's presented by the leader here about what we should do about this. £24 million a year is nothing. 50% on capital and 50% on revenue, pennies. £20 million upfront, well, nothing again. It's going to cover adult education, so that's part of this. Rural transport, the railways, net zero, partnership of flood resilience and water, the victory of the visitor economy, withdrawal of core funding from the LEPs, I notice that. LEPs will have to be funded by ourselves. And so on and so on and so on, doesn't it? I wrote down, who pays with 15 question marks? Well, of course, the answer is clear, isn't it? We pay. We're going to pay for all this. It's a poorest area. I think one of the most objectionable things I read actually was this idea that we're going to run a rail service from Cleethorpes to London, a direct line from Cleethorpes to London. Who's going to be running on that? Who's going to sell their property in, I don't know, Stevenage or Rygate? You know, Rygate's better. Lower looking South Downs to move up to Cleethorpes without view of the mud flats. Yes, wonderful. Something like that, yes. What can I say? Yeah, I fully support the leader's position on this. She's done a sterling job actually in defending the interests of this council against the onslaught from above and elsewhere. And I congratulate her, she's done a very good job here. And yes, we will support the proposal that she brought before us. At least I will, anyway. I can't speak for anybody else except myself. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Woodlift. Councillor Staples, you wish to speak?
Mr Mayor. Well, when I got possession of this document and I began to read it, it's lived with me for the past three or four days. And I've been utterly appalled at what I've read. And I think the one thing, the overriding thing of this document is giving power, more power to one person, an elected mayor. And when I picked up the comments, which some of my colleagues have here this evening, about the mayor having the power to issue a precept on local council tax, well, that finished me. Absolutely finished me. It really did. To give so much power to one person, it's just so wrong. And, you know, when we're living in an area where people are struggling, really struggling. So, you know, I want to congratulate our leader on the work she's done in supporting the people of this area. She's not lost interest in them. And I can assure everybody here this evening, I have not lost interest. I'm a Boston girl, born and bred, and I'm proud of it. And I will fight against this because it is totally wrong for our community. Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Staples. Councillor Broaden, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to echo what most of the fellow councillors also said and thank the hard work that our leader councillor Dorian has done in standing up and fighting for Boston to get us a fairer deal and is continuing to do so on a daily basis. As councillor Dorian stated at the LCC meeting discussing devolution in December, the government awarded a £20 million to be distributed throughout Lincolnshire as a one-off payment. Out of the seven districts in Lincolnshire, six were awarded figures ranging from £9 million to 1.5 million. Boston was the one district that was awarded nothing. We have six Boston County Council representatives at LCC, yet with the exception of councillor Brooks, who was absent, not one out of councillor Skinner, Ashley Morris, Griggs, Darny or Austin, stood up for our town and that's why Boston received nothing. Each one of these councillors receives £11,248.74 a year to represent us, but not one stood up and fought to get any share of the £20 million. And all were happy to back the deal on the table. I have spoken to many residents of the borough and seen many comments on social media. And a strong feeling is that they do not back this devolution deal and feel we will be cast further adrift than we already are once it is potentially agreed. They also stated the consultation is worded in such a way that it will produce a positive response and not give a true reflection of the residents of the Boston borough. Boston people elect councillors to fight for them at LCC and this is not happening. And if we're not prepared to fight for every penny for Boston, then our great town will slip further and further behind. The £24 million over 30 years in this deal is no different to what we currently get now with our mayor and isn't enough to justify the additional costs of a new layer of government or the added responsibilities that go with it. So the councillors who say, we are not really interested in a mayor, but we want the money from the government, the money's already there, so that's not a genuine reason. From day one, I said all along, if there are seven districts, there should be seven seats at this new devolution table, which, had it been passed as originally in 2016, we would have had. Not the four that has now been settled upon this time. So why was it suitable then but not suitable now? How is Boston going to be represented? Because if we are the only district now not to get any finances out of seven, you can guarantee, as councillor Bedford and councillor Gilbert and councillor Gleeson have said, we will not be getting one of the four seats on offer. Therefore, Boston will not get what we deserve. We get 5.2% now, and I'm sure this number will lower. And why should our important residents not get the same amount as residents throughout the county? We deserve the same and this deal does not give us it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Broaden, thank you very much for that. Councillor Goesch, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The number speaks by itself. We can see that Boston's share was far below average spend of £65 million. If you consider from 1718 to 2223 compared with 2324 to 2526, the allotment per resident is further reduced. Even that, Boston got 28% of the previous allotment per resident and Lincolnshire got 44% of the previous allotment, which I think is not a fair share for Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Goesch. Councillor Gleeson, do you wish to come back?
I thought I'd take advantage of a suspending, I thought at least one of us must. Hearing councillor Broaden's heartfelt speech about the way our town and borough has been treated just reminded me of the evening we had the representation on this deal by the county. And, yeah, it was full of the glowing words and all of this. They came slightly unstuck when, within their transport section, they totally failed to realise that we had a dock and we have big ships coming and going. They hadn't even bothered with that. We actually have a bigger fishing fleet, I think Rimsby do now. Yeah, so that's a major part and should be a major part of our future. And the fact that they're just totally ignored it shows what they think of us, shows what the future for Boston will be if we get the new mayoral authority. And in honesty, it just reinforces what the actual present for Boston is with the way that we are the Cinderella for county. You know, every turn, we don't get our fair share. And if you think of the, well, here we've got from 2017, so that's seven years. And I would guess the figures won't be any different if we go back to the turn of the century. So we're talking of getting on for a quarter of a century of underfunding. And it shows in our town. It shows by the way people living in the town are struggling to make a living. Lots of people having to do more than one job. Lots of people are working really hard every hour God sends are having to have their income supported by benefit because they're not being paid fairly. Our town doesn't have the transport infrastructure it needs to support the businesses we need. It doesn't have the technical infrastructure we have. And that's because, as these figures show, the county... And that's because, as these figures show, the county have failed to support us. They have an awful lot to answer for. And I am wondering, maybe we leave it till after scrutiny, but I do think we actually do need to write to the relevant secretary of state and highlight this historic year-on-year underfunding of the borough. Because that will be an even worse future if we do get this mayor authority. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Gleeson. Councillor Butler?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I, like everyone here, was elected to represent the residents of their ward. I cannot willingly support something that has the potential to make the residents of Oldleak and Wrangle or Boston Borough poorer. If before Lincolnshire gets a mayor and more control of our funding, we only get 5.2%, what chance have we got of more once democracy is removed and we have little or no say? Because let's face it, as councillor Bedford has said, should councillor Hill be mayor, the Conservatives will make sure their counterparts are surrounding them. We will be forgotten and overlooked time and time again. It is an unneeded and unwanted extra level of bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Butler. Councillor Staples, you wish to speak again?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, actually, in what my colleague councillor Gleeson has just said, Boston does have the largest active fishing fleet above Grimsby. This is not mentioned in this document at all. There's no credence paid to it. There's very little said about agriculture, and it worries me that an elected mayor would have the power to create development areas. So it's wrong, we're going to be further dictated to, everything taken from us. Our roads are a disgrace, our pavements are a disgrace. You know, I've got photographic evidence of a lady who fell on the pavement a short night ago, and injured herself severely. Nothing is being done. We are told now, if we want something done at a county council level, we must respect our county councillors and go through them. I'm sorry, but I have no respect for any of them, so I certainly won't be doing that. And I certainly would have no respect for an elected mayor, so I certainly will not be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Staples. Does anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Cantwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I note my colleagues' concerns, and I accept many of them. However, I view what this deal could become as a long-term investment of this county in its future. While members rightly bring up several concerns, it is my firm belief that this deal will be built on and further powers devolved to the regions over the coming decades. I much prefer to have an accountable mayor than a nameless civil servant in London. It is also my view that we live in an imperfect system, and it is my opinion that we must eventually take an imperfect victory. It is with this, Mr Mayor, that I will support the leader's recommendations tonight, and I look forward to the leader lobbying on our behalf and keeping us updated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Cantwell. Councillor Baxter, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I totally agree with the comments that have been made. I wanted to relate a story really, which represents probably what our residents think. I went to the event, the consultation event at Boston United in the car park. There was a guy, he was a bit lost really, he came from the borough, so I was chatting to him, and I said, well, I'll show you where to go. I didn't mention I was the councillor, and we walked into the event, similar to what councillor Bedford said. Basically, the officers seemed to have been brainwashed. I sat back and listened to what the man in the street said, and he said, I don't understand all this paperwork, but I've heard some things, so can we address these issues? One of them being the mayor. So basically, he said to the officer, how much is it going to cost? Will he dictate to everybody? So we were passed then, they said they didn't know, we were passed on to someone else. He went on to reflect on, well, he said pie in the sky. I've read this, this is pie in the sky. We're being promised a bus on a Sunday to visit people in Pilgrim. We're promised a fantastic rail system. We can get to work at six o'clock in Boston from Oldleak. So that obviously our residents said, I don't think that's the case. A classic quote from him was, as we sat down and talked, this is just pie in the sky, and we're only being treated as a small fish in the ocean. So then we were passed from people to people, and all of a sudden, they didn't have time. So I mentioned, well, this is the consultation process, so how is this going to work? So we were handed the survey. Fantastic, the proposals, you couldn't help but take the first one, strongly agree. But the crunch question was, when it came to governance? And basically, well, nobody really had an answer. So I think probably it was, well, I must admit, that the person I was with said it was slanted and biased. The thing that concerns me as well, have we been consulted properly? We have two weeks now to the 29th of January to fill in a questionnaire. I don't know about you, I've had nothing through the post, but we talk about this in Oldleak and Wrangle quite a bit. Even at the parish councils, our local county councillor just handed us a leaflet really, and I don't think many people understand. So I think it's our responsibility to make sure that our residents get to know what this means for Boston, because we don't want a raw deal. Thank you.
Hmm. Thank you very much, councillor Baxter. And how much is the bus fare going to be from?
A winner, yes.
Thank you very much. Right, we've got any more speakers? Councillor Pryke wishes to speak? Yeah, we need to hear you.
Our one and only working microphone. I agree completely with councillor Baxter, the consultation process has been a nonsense. I was really surprised when I found out from the county council that the period of consultation could have been only five or six weeks, but it was extended to eight weeks because it crossed the Christmas New Year holiday. I don't think that made any difference at all because almost nobody was aware of it beforehand. I thought that the whole system was a stitch up when I questioned councillor Hill about having a referendum and consulting the people of Lincolnshire on his proposals. And the reply from some underling was that this was dismissed at a very early stage because it would cost 1.3 million pounds, and we can't afford it. I then questioned how they got to that figure, and it appears to have been a grossed-up cost of the PCC election last time around. They're estimating that a referendum in Lincolnshire would cost twice as much as the election of the PCC last time round. I went back to them again and said that if you have a combined election with the PCC election next May 2024, and with the other elections that are due in North East Lincolnshire, North Lincolnshire, Lincoln as well, the costs will be reduced all round, and it will cost considerably less. The answer to that was, we haven't considered that. So it's pretty obvious that they weren't interested in consulting people properly. I also asked whether we were going to get a leaflet before the end of the consultation by household, similar to the thing you get for a PCC election. No, we're not going to do that at all. So we would like a leaflet, but I don't think we're going to get one from the county. Now, in reality, this has been a long-term project by the Conservatives at Lincolnshire County Council to ram this through when the last one didn't work. And they've done it by using the provisions of a rather compliant government, which likes the idea of only talking to one person in a county and not to the districts which better represent the voters across the county. The leaders of North East and North Lincolnshire almost certainly better represent their own people than a mayor for the whole of Lincolnshire would do. So it applies to them as well as us. It's democracy for everybody if we all have proper representation. So I deplore the system, and I welcome what pretty much everyone else has said on this Small comment on what happens when you do get an elected mayor, because I've watched it happening in Greater Manchester and West Yorkshire in particular. Greater Manchester, the mayor there seems to have a cabinet of 11 council leaders for all the districts within Greater Manchester. So if you can have 11 in that area, why can't we have something similar? I don't know. The Greater Manchester mayor has used his precepting powers, and a band D property, I think, is getting an extra £170, £180 on their bill this year. And of course, it's going to go up by 5% in May as well, as will all their district councils because they are social care providers. That's what we have to look forward to. At the presentation, was it a presentation at the football club the other night, I spoke to the senior civil servant or senior officer for the county council, I forget his name, and he went out of his way to say, oh, no, no, we're not going to have a precept for the mayor here. And I thought, well, you're going to suck money out of all the other councils to pay for it, so it's the equivalent of a precept. I did find it all horribly disingenuous. From West Yorkshire, a problem there now that the mayor there is plonking very, very large housing estates on their districts without consulting anybody. They've decided, oh, you can have 600 houses, and it's going to go there. I imagine if we have a mayor, we might have the same problem. Another, you may know this already, the officer from Lincolnshire was talking about how the government is approving this, and there's an agreement for the East Midlands mayor of authority. And I said, do you mean the Nottinghamshire-Darbyshire one? Because Nottinghamshire-Darbyshire have got a proto-agreement, but it doesn't cover the whole of the East Midlands. What they are having problems with is, how do you represent all the districts in Nottinghamshire and Lincolnshire? And they've got many more than we have in Lincolnshire. So is the government going to push ahead with this and let the county do this? Are we going to have a general election beforehand? And could that change things? Let's hope so. Let's hope the people of Boston will object to this proposal in the strongest possible terms. Colleagues, please urge everybody you speak to, we can get into publications, we can use social media, we can help people to oppose this. And I hope that will help to defeat it.
Right, thank you, councillor Pryke. Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? New comments and brief comments, please. Thank you, councillor Marzer. Dan, where was he? Oh, you said, okay, mindful of that, thank you.
It's on. I just wanted to, sorry, thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to say that when I was elected for Fenside, it was for the interest of the people, and I'm going to make sure that the people of Fenside know this is not in their best interest. Thank you.
Sure you will. Thank you very much. Thank you. Councillor Danny?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I echo what my colleague said here. I can disagree with you. I'm in favour of democracy, however, this country doesn't have democracy, that's the reality. And I've been saying that since I have been elected, so that's my view. I follow up on what the leader did for the bedding of the 20 million, and I confronted Martin Hill, the leader of the county, and I asked him the question, why we didn't get anything? His answer was very brutal, and I think very personal, because your council is against the devolution. Madam Leader, that's making me angry more than you, because that's become personal. If we're going to work in democracy with personal issues, we're not going to achieve anything. And I think we're going to be marginalised more and more in this town. I mentioned that we have to work in democracy. Our town is the second largest town in this county, and we are growing. We are building houses, businesses coming here, and there is a population which is going forward all the time. Our infrastructure are not adequate. Our schools, NHS, I've been talking to doctors and they say they need more equipment. So there is a lot of issues with this town, and I don't feel comfortable, to be honest with you, when you ask people, what can you do for our town? Oh, you have to do, you have to do, you have to ask, you have to ask for grants, levelling up bedding. And for me, it's like a sick person on a bed, and you give him some drips, he just survived. I do recall when I was elected the first time, 2015, the first thing which strikes me is that, if you recall, Mr Mayor, I say why we give over 40 million of our council tax to the county? The answer then was, we just collect the money for them. So what do we get for the money we generate in this place? What do we get when we push for the building of the houses through our planning system? It's making more money for the county. And as I said, I don't feel that I'm living in a democratic country, and I was gobsmacked when the matter was more personal than a professional matter, when you cannot give someone money because they are against you. This is not fair, and I will not accept it, and I will do my utmost to come back to the leader and fight for more. And I will support whatever come here, because things we're doing, we're working behind curtains that most of the people, they don't know. The more we get clear ideas on it, the more we will fight for it. And that's my promise to Bostonians, I've never been a Tory or anything, than rather a person who loves to live in this town, love the people of this town, and I will fight for it, and I can promise you that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Danny. Anybody else?
I think it's working now, thank you. I've listened to all the comments, and I've got to agree with what everybody says. I read this document two or three times, like you did councillor Woodley, and to be fair, it's a lot of hot air, glossy wording. It doesn't mean a lot really, there's no real solid content in there. It's all this maybe, could be, should be, wouldn't be, and so on. It doesn't really give a full, clear picture of what the devolution's all about. I've spoken to some residents, and most of the residents I spoke to don't even know what devolution is, they don't even understand what it is, they have a mind voting for it. This has been rushed through very quickly. It's been done in such a way that it's not given anybody a chance to air their views, discuss it properly. The residents, the population in all the different wards haven't had a chance to talk to people and express their concerns or interests or whatever. The whole thing is a sham, as far as I'm concerned. I'm disappointed to hear that our county councillors in Boston who did nothing about this at all or did not fight for what we look for. It was interesting point here made earlier on that Boston is growing and developing. Yeah, we're growing and developing without anybody's help, being underthundered, and that's a credit to this borough for what you're doing, and that's a credit to all the people in this room, because you're all fighting for your own wards. I've been in here 15 years in Boston, I love the town, I love the borough. I came from a large city to live over here. I want to work for this borough, and I don't really want to see this borough being underfunded anymore.
Leader, and Dorrin, it's fought very hard, and I listened to what she said this evening, and she does fight for it, and tries to have somebody who takes the pride, passion, and the enthusiasm, get things done, make things happen. And we've not had that for a long time, and I was like, I've been listening before, and I've had that for quite some time. But I very sincerely, I think all the other councillors here, they're different groups, they don't want to do this, they've got to fight this now, screwing this while the private will be suggested, we need people to miss this council and get them to be accountable for what this is, for the shambles of them.
Thank you, councillor Pierpoint. Councillor Scoot, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As a newly elected councillor, I represent the people of Fishtoff, I'm Boston born and bred, and for a long time now, I have believed- And for a long time now, I have believed that the county is top-handed towards Lincoln. I attended the presentation on Thursday afternoon and was met by an officer. And when he found out I was a borough councillor, asked, what do you know of the process so far? So I explained to the briefing we had and said, my concerns were the fact that we were not getting a seat at the top table. Oh, you don't need that, he said. You will be on scrutiny committees, so you'll be able to influence it. And I said, really? So you really believe that? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I said, well, in my dealings with the county councillors that I've been told I've got to go through so far, I haven't had a very good experience. And we had a discussion and he suggested one or two things. But just to make my point, if you look at page 69, 128b, and I'm quoting now, "The circuitry road around Lincoln is a recognised priority to serve the Humber ports and the east coast visitors attractions." What is Boston but a port and a main route to the, one of the major seaside towns in the country? And then if you look at page 182, 177, it talks about sorry, this page is flipped over. It talks about Lincoln's corner quarter development has also showcased the impact of High Street heritage action zones. We have a church that is over 700 years old, a guild all this is over 1,000 years old. We were instrumental in forming what is the new America and yet we do not get a mention. This is shambolic, Mr Mayor, it really is. And I wholeheartedly support our leader's proposals. Thank you.
Thank you very thank you very much councillor Scoot. Now, are there any, anybody else wish to speak? Councillor Sarah Sharp?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do absolutely echo everything else I've heard tonight. I do thank councillor Scoot for bringing up that amazing history. They do allude to it in the first paragraph. But they don't want to support us in any way. My dad has said for a long time that Lincoln keep all the money. He's been saying, I think my whole life. And I couldn't sleep easy tonight if I didn't speak and say paragraph 1.10 is just shocking. And to think that in 2054, this amount of money is not going to increase at all. I want a life for my children and hopefully grandchildren. I want them to have somewhere they're proud of, somewhere they want to remain and somewhere that's invested in. As absolute no way I can support this.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. Thank you very much councillor Sharp. Have we got any more comments on this? We've been on this half an hour now, so I'm just looking for new and brief comments, please. Are there anything else? Anybody else want to speak? Okay, so I must ask councillor, what? Councillor Dorian to sum up, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you to all my colleagues here tonight from all different groups for speaking. It's really refreshing to hear that for the most part, we are singing with one voice, Mr Mayor. I do agree with the points that many of you have raised councillor Gilbert. I agree with you that this is not an extension of democracy. And it is a kind of get out of jail free card, you said, for civil servants. I can tell you a little story that when I was pressing councillor Hill on why he was so desperate to get this mayoral combined county authority over the line. He said, oh, oh, government don't want to deal with several district leaders. They just want to deal with one mayor. And I thought, but that's their job. Is it not? Is that not government's job to deal with the elected representatives? Councillor Bedford, thank you so much for your wise words. For those of you that don't know, councillor Bedford was a previous leader who signed the previous iteration of the devolution deal in 2016, I think it was. And when he signed that document, every district leader had a seat at the table. And I guess that was part of the reason you felt compelled to go along with it because it was fair. So thank you for your wise words. The same for councillor Gleeson. You're absolutely right when you talk about that it's a model that works in urban areas, but you cannot easily transfer that into an agricultural stroke rural area where we've got communities that are very disparate in nature. I hear what you say about our council tax support scheme. And I feel that you could be pushing on an open door there with my administration, councillor Gleeson. Because if it's not fair for local people, then perhaps we ought to investigate some alternatives and support those vulnerable people in our community that have the least amount of money. Councillor Woodliffe, thank you again for your support this evening. Again, very wise words and I appreciate your ongoing support. Thank you for that. As leader of the opposition, I think we work very well together. Dale rousing speech as ever. Thank you very much to everyone in my group who spoke. I don't want to take everybody's time by commenting. Councillor Cantwell, well done. You know, for a long time there, I thought none of your group were going to speak. And I thought, here comes a young buck out this table. I take that as a compliment. And it was, it was B buck, not anything else. And, and no, well done because, you know, it's important for your viewers, even if you disagree. And I want, you know, you've got a future in politics and I want you to do, to do well. You did say that it could be an imperfect victory and I don't, I think that's an oxymoron. And perhaps I've misunderstood what you said, but I disagree with that phrase. I don't think it's that at all. I think it's very poor. Councillor Pryke, you made some good comments there. It is a stitch up. You described it as a stitch up. And your comments about the referendum were well made. Thank you for those. Councillor Danny, at the end, thank you for speaking. I didn't think you were going to, but eventually you did. I take it you resigned then after you met with Martin Hill and he said what he said?
Yes, of course. I didn't, I didn't like, to be honest, front of you all, I didn't like the answer when I asked him why we didn't get any share from the bedding or of our leader. No, because they are against the, you know, devolution. I wasn't happy. If we're going to go personal, that means, as I say, there is no professionalism at all in the bedding. So we're going to be left behind if we raise our voice. So there is no democracy then. So it's done for a purpose. I can promise you and assure you that I will stand in the face of everything which has come across Boston. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Yeah.
Are you happy with that?
Yeah, well, clearly you didn't resign, but the thought that I can't let go of councillor Danny was you had the document, you had the piece of paper on your table at full council on the 1st of December, which clearly showed that Boston was to get nothing from the additional 20 million pounds. And you voted for it. I've watched the YouTube video. I've annotated what you said. I could tell you chapter and verse, but we don't have time. But you supported the fact that Boston got nothing. So I'm afraid actions speak louder than words councillor Danny. And your actions and voting for that deal are appalling and I don't accept your words. And I actually think whoever said, all the county councillors, councillor Pierpoint, said you should all resign was right on the money. And if you don't resign, we're coming for you. Electorally, not and to those who say that they think councillor Hill's going to be the mayor, I wouldn't be so sure. I think there's a lot of people with egos and that think that they should be wearing that hat. And a lot of them are in the Conservative Party because they've told me. So let them all fight amongst themselves to get the gig. So I'll leave it there, Mr Mayor. I move the recommendation so that I, that this council informs my response as leader of this council to the consultation exercise. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Durham. Do you have a second, or councillor Broughton? So we now come to the vote. All those in favour? I'm going to vote on this one. Clearly carried. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. It seems to me, I know I'm not allowed to express a personal opinion, but if you have an elected mayor, what's the risk of that mayor becoming a dictator? It's sort of, I don't know, it just sort of, eh? It's a thin line, isn't it? Yeah, yeah. Okay, that concludes the meeting. Thank you all very much. And thank you all very much for the Christmas cards and the birthday wishes. It's very kind of you. My next mayoral charity do is on the 1st of February for the Bangers and Mash. Tickets are available now in the mayor's parlour. Thank you.